Second.
Second by Glenn, please call Rowan and suspension.
Mr. Daleon.
Mr. Daleon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Mr. Farrar.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Mr. Turner.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
And Mr. Amarin.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Mr. Amarin.
Yes.
Move it up.
Second.
Second by Garrett, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance?
Mr. Daleon.
Seeing none, please call Rowan for adoption.
Mr. Daleon.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Mr. Farrar.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Mr. Kuhar.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Mr. Amarin.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
And Mr. Amarin.
Yes.
Draft 2022-027 has passed.
Okay, thank you with the corporate draft number 2022-028. I don't know why.
Draft 2022-028, a Norman's demanding ordinance number 2021-133, the current appropriation ordinance passed. December 15th, 2021, goes to adjust appropriations, transfers, and advances from the various funds of the City of Kent to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Farrar.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Who's suspension?
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Second. Second by Mike, please call Rowan and suspension.
And Mr. Daleon.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Mr. Amarin.
Yes.
And Mr. Daleon.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar. Ms. Rosenberg.
Second.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance?
Mr. Amarin. And Mr. Daleon.
Seeing none, please call Rowan for adoption.
Draft 2022-028 has passed.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Amarin.
Yes.
And Mr. Daleon.
Yes.
Okay, draft 2022-028 has passed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, was this the second or the third reading on that?
Well, we didn't have enough people to suspend the rules the first time, the last council meeting, so we had to have this special council meeting, but now you suspended the rules.
Yeah. People on the margins are doing so because we recognize they don't have some of the advantages to have their voice heard like the majority do. For example, social capital. I'm sure all of you run into constituents at restaurants and bars who will say, oh, I'm concerned about this, but if you're low income or a different race, you don't always have that social capital to rely on for communication. And so our hope, speaking through KIFA, is that there can be some intentional mechanism created that will establish meaningful conversations about race. I would like to just note, and this is on the handout, that we feel there are a couple of parameters that are very important. One of them is just letting people be aware that it's there and exists, and that can be a challenge. I've had the opportunity to talk to a couple of department heads in the city who are doing great things like economic development with their resources and personnel with hiring, but we're finding when we talk to some of the black residents in Kent, they're not getting that information, and there's a disconnect. So whatever is created certainly needs to be very visible in the community and certainly involving the grassroots. I also held some community meetings for the black residents in Kent. We had two of them, and they really shared some very heartfelt, heart-wrenching stories. And we invited three of them to come to share their stories this evening, to share their stories, and they all declined. And in thinking about it, it's probably not surprising, one said in particular she had to worry about her employer and what her employer might think, which is a sad situation that we have that in Kent. So our hope would be that there would be some outlet for people to privately and safely share information. We also feel it needs to be credible and accountable, and with that, we certainly would like to see the city involved in sanctioning whatever this mechanism is, and we would like it to have the ability to analyze data, to look at patterns, and also recommend solutions. We're not, like the NAACP at this point, we're not recommending anything in particular. Could be staff position, could be a commission. But I will close just by saying that I was curious and went online and did just a little bit of research on racial justice commissions, and there are quite a few of them. There's good reading out there on your handout. I've given a website by a group, a nonprofit that acts, and I also noted four of the areas in particular that are common among the commissions that use this particular model. And you'll notice that I included Heart and Soul as one of the areas that would be included as far as the data with such a mechanism. And I feel that by doing so, creating a separate mechanism would complement the work of Heart and Soul. And finally, I just want to say that the cities I found are large cities. I had trouble finding a city the size of Kent, but I think that poses a great opportunity for us because if other cities can do it, we can certainly not only do it, but do it better, and we have the opportunity to be a role model and set best practices. So on behalf of KIFA, we certainly hope that the conversation continues, and we support some type of intentional effort to raise the voices of the minority community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Further, yes. Name and address for the reference.
Renee Rahutsky, hopefully you know how to spell it, 237 Highland Avenue in Kent. I'm going to be very brief. Some of you may know my profession is organizational development, and I realize what we are asking you is a big lift for any city council to do. We appreciated being invited last week to, or last month, to the committee of the whole meeting where Dave Ruler presented all the work that you've been doing, and it's really good work, and we want to commend you for that. And this idea of having a mechanism for this reflection, it's really a feedback loop for things that you're not really able to see with the existing feedback loops. We're not asking you to look for trouble where there's no trouble. We're really asking you to pay attention to what's happening at the margins for things that aren't being, that's not in your awareness, especially for those of you who are white, especially for those of you who move in circles that are around indigenous neighbors. And so we're just inviting you to dig deep into the possibility of how we can help make Kent a welcoming place, an inclusive place, not just for people who look like me with white skin, but for our siblings who sometimes don't experience the same sort of inclusion and welcome that most of us feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Further? No other comment from you, let's go back to council. It's already in committee, I think we just scheduled next month.
That's what I was going to do, is put it in committee, but...
It's already in committee.
Okay.
So the further discussion, it's my understanding you're going to ask for time to make a presentation. Okay. There anything further on this?
It's 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just ask, Mr. Mayor, there's a question.
Oh.
It's May 4th at 7:00 PM.
I just ask that you keep the comments, gossip, or whatever it is, true. Some of the calls, as I got from council members, are people telling them unfactual things. It's just going to hinder the operation. Be truthful.
I really take issue with saying that anybody on the NAACP was untruthful in any situation. So we were invited, I'm the secretary, and we were invited to present tonight. That's not untruthful. So there might have been a miscommunication along the way, but we were invited and we prepared for weeks and hours, having meetings with community members for this. And so I don't want comments like that to be heard by the public casting distrust upon a group like the NAACP. This is a group that has been the largest and oldest organization in our country since 1909 that has run, birthed and run the civil rights movement. And the Portage County NAACP, our branch, is trustworthy, extremely trustworthy, and doing the everyday countless hours and emotional labor of work to make Portage County, make Kent a safe place for all. I made some notes for tonight, and I was going to stand back, and I can, but I can't not stand up when somebody says that there are rumors and that the NAACP, whoever it is you're referring to, has been distrustful, and that's just not true.
I sent that as a general comment because when this is all over, go to the person that told you some of this stuff and see if it was true.
That's, I don't know what that means.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, if you're referring, are you referring to me?
I didn't, it was a general comment. Everybody in this room heard it.
Right, because I was going to speak tonight. I did address the clerk.
Why didn't you speak?
Because you said it was a misunderstanding.
The thing around that I altered the agenda for tonight. Was that true? I don't know who did. I'm sending in that general.
Well, I was concerned that had been removed from the agenda that we were speaking tonight.
Did that happen?
We weren't on the agenda, and we were invited to speak.
You were on the agenda, and it was stated a month ago, we were going to address the letter from the NAACP.
We were invited to give a 45-minute presentation of data.
No, no. We will next month.
Okay, that's wonderful, but it's not distrust, it's not untrue. That has been...
It never was there.
Well, that's a problem because we were invited to speak, to present.
I don't know how else to explain it.
Me neither.
The agenda for tonight was to address the NAACP letter that was proposed in December When we met last month and went over Heart and Soul, we said the next step was to address the letter that was submitted, proposal that was submitted on that date.
Okay, so I'm wondering where the disconnect was, or we thought we were invited to give a presentation today.
You will next month.
But it's on the agenda, and so that's all I want to say about that. And so if we're, I'm happy to have your presentation next week, or May 4th. Obviously, the organization has asked for that, to change it from today or delay it from today until the following month, so...
That's wonderful. What I want to differentiate is a conversation of the council regarding the previous letter from December is different than the NAACP leading the conversation by giving the data and the information that has been gathered as a result of interviews and interactions with the community. So it is different, it's just the county, the council is discussing the letter as to the, it's different than the NAACP presenting and leading the conversation, a comment about the NAACP, whether you said the name or not.
You know, I think we're in it for all the same direction.
Great, that's great.
It's, we're going to address it next month again.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know, go ahead. Name and...
Yeah, so Charlene Ramis Chesnas, 4451 Newcomer Road, Franklin Township. I wasn't going to say anything, I was here to support. I am the chair of education for the NAACP Portage County. I served as the president's ambassador for DEI for Kent State for President Beverly Warren, and I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of the students. The reason I'm speaking is because I don't want to leave everybody with the last thought of this conversation being contentious, I guess, or negative. I want everybody to leave here looking forward to May 4th conversation, that it's positive, it's commerce. You know, we are in a college town, you know, talking to students. We want our students to feel positive here. I'm a Kent State alum. I, you know, I'm not even going to tell you when I was here, but things have changed in Kent since I've been here, and, you know, my goal is always to continue to bring positivity to Kent. And so I'm asking everyone in the room to leave here looking forward to May 4th conversation and the value that this would bring to Kent, not only in equity and inclusion, you know, having a conversation. I'm going to say that back when I was here, here to City, folks that live here, and for everyone who has interest in brewing Kent. So that's what I'm looking forward to for May 4th conversation. So let's think positive, please. Thank you.
Keyword, positive.
Yeah.
I think we're done now. I mean, I don't want to shortchange anybody, but we're going to move on. The next thing and item is the camp marijuana incentive.
Yes, as you recall, back in January, this council passed the sensible marijuana... we're going to... we sent that ordinance in its form for the board of elections, and they did not like the one we sent in, so they sent us back a sample of what they have approved in the plans on the November. We sent that ordinance in its form to the board of election, and they did not like that the board will accept to get this on the ballot in November.
Questions for Hope?
Oh, gosh, August or September, yeah.
Okay, because I was going to say, is this like...
Yeah.
Not going to happen this morning.
No, yeah. So that's the reason they chose the general election. We wanted, I believe council wanted to get the most voters out, so that's the reason they chose the general election.
I think it is too late. Sorry, I think it is too late. I think February is for May.
We just need a motion to, with an emergency, to bring the ordinance to the next council.
Are you looking for a motion now, or are we review something, or?
This would be the same as if it was the first time I was talking to you. We just need a motion to, with an emergency, to bring the ordinance to the next council need for you to pass. If it would pass, it basically would take our...
Pass the election.
It passes in the November election. It would take our drug abuse ordinance, and if a person was charged with drug abuse, and they were found guilty under a city ordinance... The court could not assess a fine or court cost. The court could not assess a fine or court cost. Yes, yes, they do, yep.
And they have enough signatures to put that out of petition.
Yep.
And you have, part of your obligation is to move that, well, we talked about that. Mr. Kuhar.
Hopefully this falls within the realm of a question I'd like to ask. So as council members, we have no choice but to pass it anyhow. But the question I have is, there's been some talk about, even though you pass a city ordinance on a crime, certain crime, that there's a state ordinance or a state law that supersedes that. Is that correct?
It doesn't necessarily supersede. They can live together, but a police officer would have the discretion to decide which he wanted to use. I will direct you to a confidential and privileged communication that I sent to you, or that they passed on, for some of the questions I thought you would bring up. But basically, if you decided not to pass this and send it on to the voters... I believe that the organizations that are behind...
The question was...
If you read my memo between now and the next meeting, I think you'll get your answer.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience want to speak on this? Seeing none, back to council, make the motion, John, or somebody hiding.
So we just basically have to move this forward to...
That is, as your attorney, I am asking you and advising you to please move this forward to the council meeting and pass it at that time.
Can I just say, so moved? Second.
With the emergency.
With the emergency.
Right here, guys. There ain't discussion. Further discussion, further discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. That's it for the committee of hope tonight. Community Development, Mr. Kuhar, you're on.
Okay, I'm on. We have some grant changes, Lewis and Richard.
Actually, they're not grant changes, they're actually changes to our park fee. So this applies to the multi-unit. The city does provide a match for the park fee, and the reason the park fee is in place is to ensure that we increase available park lands as our population grows. The last ordinance in 1191, we have made some minor changes. There was some mathematical formula issues that were brought forth a few years back that we corrected, but overall, it was cumbersome, difficult, and quite challenging, actually. Many of the developers had issues and problems with it, and the appraisals that were used were completely outdated. So we did look at, can we redevelop our park fee ordinance and eliminate the city match? With our work with outside council, it was determined that we definitely need to include a city match. So with the new director in budget and finance and the new director at Parks and Recreation, we, the law department, community development, met with them, and we looked at various models from other communities, and we came up with what's before you. This is a substantive rewrite, so it's basically a complete replacement. The new chapter will have the same number, but it's defined residential dwelling unit matches for the first time, as it did not in the other one, the definition of residential dwelling unit as it is applied in our zoning code, so that consistency of policy matters. We also made sure that we covered all classifications of residential dwelling units so that, because we often had developers come saying they were doing a mixed use or that their property was for seniors, it is literally a flat rate. If you're increasing residents in the dwelling units, then the park fee applies. This would not apply for an exact replacement, so if there was a 12-unit that was damaged or they wanted to update it and it was going to stay 12 units, the park fee would not be applicable. This is to increase park revenue for increased park services and needs when the population grows. So it would not apply in some of the other aspects that people have asked about. I did have an inquiry with regards to the rooming house because the rooming house, we're still charging $500 per bedroom, and that is because, for those of you that have been around a while, you know I've been before you no less than probably four times, trying to tighten up the definition of rooming house because it has been used as a loophole for some of our rent-per-bed larger developments. We finally closed that loophole, and our goal is really to not increase rooming houses at this point because we already are pretty built out for that, and it removes the ability to use that in those larger developments. I can answer specific questions about it, but it is really straightforward. The table will be much easier for us all to apply, and while at the time, somebody pulls a building permit. So I can answer any questions about specific language in here. I did find a typo. It's a Scrivener's error, so I'll fix it before I get it to Amy, but when I was looking at it, I actually found two. So I will correct both of those and make sure that they get to before you have that final one. But this would be a complete repeal of the existing language, and I'm requesting with emergency a replacement with the new language that I presented.
Okay, council questions?
Just real quick, so it has to go to planning?
The way it works now is whenever we have a residential development, I should say of a, not on a single family, a single family, it's an automatic okay. But if it's a project that is subject to planning commission, either permitted or conditionally permitted use, and that is an increase in residential dwelling units, the park fee is calculated, it is presented to and sent to the director for Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation, who gets board approval. The board agrees, and then that information is conveyed to our planning commission. The planning commission, for quite honestly, is a rubber stamp. Without a recommendation from Parks and Rec board members, they would not approve it. But there was a lot of challenges because we, our calculation did not always match what was calculated by the former Parks and Rec director and approved by the board, so this will make it easy for everyone to apply.
You hit on this? I mean, I know that we've suspended it for a while.
Well, actually, it has been back in place because that moratorium did expire. We have not had any large developments, but some single families have had the fee applied, so they have been receiving it, and they will not, actually, Rhonda and Angela ran, we looked at different numbers, they ran different calculations, Rhonda, they also looked at different ways of actually... Because we already are pretty... Figuring it. So while it is slightly less than what was received from some of the other developments, which by the way, were fees that were calculated and negotiated in ways that were sometimes challenging for developers to follow, it may be a little less on some of those bigger ones, but overall, they're still going to be a significant help to Parks and Rec, and it will be matched by the city.
Wasn't there something they could pay, like the developments? Give land, now is that still in?
It is, however, the way it comprehensive plan determine whether or not a offer of a donation or fee, what we would call, like almost like a fee in lieu, they would do the land in lieu if it actually was something that wanted to be accepted. Under the other language, oftentimes... Under the other language, oftentimes, there was areas that were offered and were not wanted, because they were unearthed two acres, or they didn't really support, but there really wasn't always a full way to do it, so oftentimes, John Idony would blend, taking the land and the other. So, this does allow for it, but it also allows, for the first time, Parks and Rec the opportunity to say, well, this doesn't align with our environment, so thank you.
Heidi?
Yeah, that's well said. I just want to say that everybody has B.
We got 200,000 of them.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ameri, land use, Mr. Carrera.
The Land Use Committee, and the, we talked about the expedited annexation request for Davy Tree.
Yes. Thank you. So, Davy Tree purchased the former Oaknolls Golf Course back in 2017. It was all part of their efforts to expand a east campus, as for a master plan that basically is going to support a science and learning center and a community arboretum. They also have additionally purchased the former site of the Franklin Elementary. The elementary is in the city's jurisdiction, but the Oaknolls Golf Course is in Franklin Township. After evaluating some of the costs associated with developing that parcel into the east campus, paid them being part of the city. So, they approached the city and Franklin Township with a, the desire to submit a petition for annexation. The Ohio Revised Code allows five types of annexation, and the first one is called a type-one expedited, and it's called that because the owner of the parcel, 100% of the owners of the parcel, or 85%, I should say, have to agree to the annexation, there's only one property owner here, so we do have 100%, and both the township that would be affected by the annexation, and the municipality that would be accepting the parcel, have to agree to an annexation agreement. Through outside counsel, and the Law Department, and the Community Development Department, as well as the City Manager, we have worked up options, and those terms were accepted by Franklin Township, and adopted legislatively by them in a resolution on March 22nd. The terms were, are completed, it is filed with the county, and the county will accept and redraw the jurisdictional boundary, so it doesn't require a vote even at the county level, once we get through the legislative level at the township and the city. So, the agreement terms are that the city will reimburse the township for what it would have received in real property taxes from the property if, but for the annexation. The parcel, I did want to clarify for the record, does generate about $45,000 in taxes, however, the township would be receiving close to about $5200 to $5300 in real property taxes, because as many of you may be aware, the majority of real property taxes actually benefits the Kent City School System. So, we would be reimbursing them that amount for the periods that Davy would be working on the actual development of the master plan, and, and once the site was operational, and they had transactions to, that would be about 20, this is an estimate based on anticipated payroll from Davy, about $27,500 would be received by the city when we are receiving income tax from that, and about $22,500 would go to the township. We would continue that for 10 years, at the end of the 10-year income tax year period, all obligations of the city would be, would end, and the parcel would be just part of the city as any other parcel that we currently have. I can answer any questions?
So, will we be providing water services?
Yes, yeah. So, there is water available on the Franklin, former Franklin Elementary site, that, that connection to the site.
Move to approve with emergency?
Second.
All right. All those who bear the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, say no. Motion passes. That's it.
Thank you.
Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Sedoti is not here, Tracy Wall is not here, so I guess I care. First on agenda is the update of the new KSU Bike Scooter Program. Jim Bowden, you're going to speak to this.
Yes, sorry, yes. I promise this won't be long, but I do want to show you something as part of it, so.
And they brought props. Turn the headlight on, John Thomas over there. You're the star, John. Got the headlight shining on you.
The sharing program. On March 7th, as part of the city and Kent State's efforts to reduce carbon emissions and promote traffic management through the city versus building additional capacity on the roadways. In the first 12 days, they had 14,000 trips, and according to the North American Bike Share and Scooter Share Program, they said, they estimate that 36% of trips taken on the area units eliminate vehicle trips, so that's about 5,000 trips potentially eliminated in those 12 days. So, that being said, the last dockless program we had struggled with parking and other misuse of the vehicles. And as these things evolve, we try to get better over time, and Spin has a much better business model to promote a more organized units. So, a lot of these are at bike racks, so you can click at it, and you can see it's, that one, I believe, is the Kent Co-op's bike racks, and we have them at Benini's Bike Rack. So, they are not free to park everywhere in the city, but almost like parking spots, regular vehicle parking spots, they need to be a little bit ubiquitous, so that they can be used properly and efficiently. So, how Spin uses this, which is really, which really does well incentivizing riders, is they can't end the ride unless they're in one of these geofenced areas. So, their ride is, I believe the price, a dollar, unlock the vehicle, 29 cents a minute, so if they don't park them in that, they can't end the ride, so they would still be being charged. And from the initial setup, going around and looking at pictures from the mayor early on, of a couple vehicles parked in the middle of a parking lot in the drive aisle, that Spin went and moved, and then they relocated that geofenced area. They also have the ability to create no-ride zones, so that people can't ride in those areas, so something like the parking deck, there's a no-ride zone. I do want to caution you that these geofenced areas are not very discreet, I mean, there's a, you can't get exact, so in some places, we have the ability to put down decals and stickers to help formalize it, if there are problems in those areas. So, Spin has been really good with, working with us and the university to adjust these. Yeah, Mike, why don't you head?
Sure. I'll jump in here real quick. My name is Michael Beck, I am the general manager for Spin for what we call our Great Lakes region. It's Ohio, Indiana, and Michigan. And then, again, this is Josh Souls, he is the lead for Kent and Akron, so he's here on a daily basis. The speed, so the bikes can go up to 20 miles per hour, they are pedal-assist bikes, so you'll pedal them, and they'll kind of give you a little extra punch to help get up the hills and move a little quicker. The scooters, they will go 15 miles an hour. Now, like you mentioned, we do have different areas where we consider speed to be an issue, we're dipping through at a fast rate, so we reduced the speed there through a geofence that brought it down to, I believe we went to nine, eight miles per hour. So, it's a little over walking speed, kind of a little over a jogging speed, but still not a super high speed that would present an issue to people. Yes, sir?
How many watts are the scooters and the bikes, and how, how many volts?
I'm sorry?
How many watts and how many volts?
Oh, that might be a question. Do you? Yeah, we can get you an answer on that, though, so I'll make sure to copy that down.
Heidi?
Has usership remained high since the very rollout of this? Because I have seen a lot of people using them. What has been the trend? Has it been continuing to rise, or has it leveled off? Just curious.
Well, so, in the beginning, whenever we launch a program, we see a bit when the students left for spring break, and then we see it settle out and kind of lower, the demand lower for weather. So, if it's pouring down rain, snow, cold, we see it kind of drop. The demand, though, has, given all those, all those factors, the demand has remained very high.
Want to ask a follow-up?
Yeah, we've got the floor.
Okay, so, since, since it's been really rolled out very well to the campus, I understand, now to do something besides come to city council, to roll it out to the community, so that maybe when the students, when the student tuition does drop, the community is also utilizing these.
Yes, so we like to do what we call tabling, you know, anytime there is, let's say there's a farmer's market down there, a lot by the railroad tracks there, a college in, I forget, thank you, I was just there eating dinner. So, you know, if there's a farmer's market, then we can have a tabling event, where we can talk to the people, we do that. Before we rolled this out, though, we had Josh and some members of his team go to local businesses, and just door-to-door-to-door, handing out pamphlets, they rode the scooters there, so people could see it, see what they're talking about, answer any questions, talk about, you know, what to expect when, when the scooters do hit the street. Typically, so the university was a little more suited for us to kind of focus on the students, because we have them there in, like the Student Union, or the Rec Center or things, you know, the, the weather just wasn't great for one-on-one conversations with people out on the street. But as the weather gets better, and we're able to kind of do outdoor activities, just any opportunity we can tie ourselves into, we want to get out there and talk to people. And I know, yep.
Just really quick, they also reached out to Main Street Kent and the Chamber of Commerce, and if you look at Main Street Kent's email updates, it's the upcoming events you see on the bottom of every one of them, the Spin is here in Kent, and you can, where to get information on it, so.
Is there?
And it's on the gateway sign, too.
So, is there an age limit, and, you know?
Yeah, age limit is 18, and the way that we verify that is that they have to upload an ID.
I would add that according, according to the state law, they have to be at least 16, so Spin raising it to 18 is an act on their part to make it safer for everyone, so.
John? There's probably another one here. Is there a weight limit?
300 pounds. 300 pounds.
Okay. I'm safe, John.
Let, 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 we, we had a, a gentleman who worked for us, who was well above 300 pounds, by several hundred pounds, and would still ride these, so the manufacturers, yeah, manufacturer's weight limit is 300 pounds.
That's pretty healthy.
Further questions?
Mike?
What's, the red areas are parking lots?
The red areas are parking lots, so those are also representing no-ride zones. So, those are the geofenced areas, where if someone's riding a scooter, they may be doing 15 miles an hour, and they'll hit the no-ride zone. What happens is the scooter will actually talk to them, and go boop, 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 boop. In the app, it'll also tell them, so if they pull their phone out to see what's going on, what's wrong, it'll say, you're under no-ride zone, please get out of this area. It'll also disable the throttle. We don't want to stop them, because we see some people flying across the parking lots, but what we do is we disable the throttle. So, if you see some of these no-ride zones, you might think to yourself on the ground, it's not working, I saw a scooter ride right in it, but if you watch for a second, what you'll probably do is see the guy dismount, and scratch his head for a little bit, pull out his phone, and then turn around and walk out, so that's the way those are handled.
John, you finished? You said the red areas are the parking lots, I saw three units parked on Northwater and Columbus, but I don't see any red blocks there.
Oh, so the red areas up here, so the large red areas are vehicle parking lots, like for cars and things, we want to keep the scooters and bikes out of those, so those are no parking areas, so, or no-ride zones, go ahead.
The red dots are the parking?
The red dots are the parking, and here's Northwater and Columbus, is this dot right there?
Are you done, John?
Yes.
Heidi?
So, are these, are these scooters, I know bicycles will probably be able to ride in the street, on the streets. Are scooters also allowed to ride on the streets, like on the side of the streets, like any other? Thank you.
Yeah, a couple years ago, the state passed an amendment to their traffic laws, and that's actually where I got the name low-speed micromobility device. And in that law, it says that they may be operated on the public streets, highways, sidewalks, shared-use paths, in all different locations, so yes, they're allowed.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other questions? Anybody from the audience want to ask? Yes, sir.
The, 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 is that the same to the bikes as the scooters?
Yes.
Is there any recommendation or expectation of helmets by wire?
Yes, actually, we recommend, strongly recommend wearing a helmet, I mean, if you want to keep it all in one piece. Also, when we do our tabling events, one of the things that we promised in the contract is that we distribute helmets, and so all someone has to do is come up and ask us for a helmet, and we hand them a helmet. Do you have a rough number, how many have we handed out so far?
Over 350.
Over 350 helmets on and off campus here. We typically, anytime we go out to a tabling event, we bring several boxes of helmets. It's, it's just an easy way to prevent anybody from doing anything silly, so.
I've just never seen anybody with a helmet on that.
Well, the other thing is, once they, once they get on it, they assume risk, and we're all adults, and I've seen plenty of people on the highway on a motorcycle without a helmet, so. helmet, so. But we absolutely recommend wearing a helmet.
Give your name, and I'm not going to ask you come, but speak loudly.
Sorry. Valerie Lynn, question. How many people are managing the bikes that are put in these park zones or these set-up areas because we are seeing them just kind of litter around the city? And my only concern is how much are we managing that and getting them into a new visiting area that's not cluttered? Or like taking up the sidewalks and preventing people from walking their dogs?
Mm-hmm. Perfect. So, we have a team of Josh, and we have a mechanic back at the shop, and then we have four other personnel on a rotation to maintain as much of a continuous operation out here as we can. We have somebody out there right now. Actually, Chris was asking where our van was, and he said, "It's out there working on scooters." But absolutely, we want to remain responsive to the community, responsive to people walking their dogs. We don't want to block the sidewalk. So, on every scooter, Josh, can you point out to where the, sorry, I don't want to get away from the microphone. On every scooter, there's a phone number, and we're also getting some stickers made as well for these units. They're just, take a little while to, it's on there. There is a, a number on each scooter. You can call and report where these are, and we'll come right out and pick them up. It was funny, I actually was timing one, the, someone from the police department called me and asked, where was that, 440?
440.
Yeah. Asked us to come move that, and I was timing on how long it took to do it, and it was, what was it, 15, 20 minutes from the time I received the call to the time they confirmed it was moved. So, the thing is, we want to remain responsive to the community and to the people. We don't want to block sidewalks. We don't want to do what our competitors do and throw things out here and have the public deal with it. It's our company, they're our, our scooters and our bikes, and we want them there for you to use and the community to use, just to get around, to be, to become a more vibrant community. We found that when the scooters and the bikes are available, like for instance, students who might not have come off of campus because they couldn't afford an Uber or a Lyft or have their own car, they might jump on a bike and come down here and patronize some businesses that are on Main Street. So, that's the thing we're looking for, and I just want to say, we just really want to make it work. So, we've been adjusting points, making sure that they're not cluttering up things. I mean, if we get, I don't know how many we've adjusted so far, probably 20 different points, because we want to make this work for the community. We don't want to be here as a nuisance. We want to be a partner. Yes, sir?
Do you have any, what the runtime is on the batteries or the average distance traveled before they charge goes down?
Mm-hmm. These are great batteries here. So, these are swappable batteries. So, we don't, our older model was, we used to have to take the whole device back to plug in at the warehouse. We've changed that model, so there's a little hatch right there that they can pop open and swap the scooters, which maintains availability to the community. The runtime on each one of these batteries is much greater than our older models, so you'll probably get three to four solid days of riding on these scooters with between two to three, two to five trips a day.
Mileage?
Mileage, you could probably run it for 30, 35 miles straight on level ground easily. Someone like my size on there. I'm not very light anymore.
That's not bad.
Johnny, done?
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas, you had your hand up.
Yes, sir. Is your organization typically a privately owned? And is your home office really?
Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Privately owned. We did have an acquisition from a German company called Tier. They are a scooter company in Europe. They are the largest scooter company in Europe. They're exposed to weather, wear and tear, whatever may happen to them. And so, we want to protect the assets as much as we can, but also meet the needs of the city. And that's kind of a delicate balance that we have to play. Yes, Chris?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add to that a little bit. My name is Chris Lucas. I work for the Department of Recreation and Wellness Services, so I'm the main contact with the city and Spin and the university. And our goal for us was to start with a really conservative approach. We wanted to make sure that we had, you know, we were thinking about as much as we could ahead of time, so that we could have a really safe and successful launch. So, that's what we've done. We're really proud of the program that we've facilitated so far, and we're in constant communication with Spin as far as what do the numbers look like, what is, you know, where are people riding, where are people potentially using the bikes, or where are there, are too many of them? So, it's like Mike saying, we will continue to monitor that and make changes as we do.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anybody else? If not, this is just an informational thing to counsel.
Thank you. Good luck.
Probably, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks very much.
Next on the item, agenda is a road closure for Craft Beer Festival. How quick is it with batteries?
That's good, thanks.
Riddick, you're the one?
Yep. This is, the Kent ACs have their Kent Craft Beer Festival, and typically, that is on Franklin Avenue, but with the over Easy taking over the depot space, there were some concerns about access to the parking lot, so the Kent ACs graciously offered to relocate, and they're going to have it on North Water between East Main and Portage, similar to Main Street Kent's move, in order to not cause any issues. But since it's a new location, it's treated as a new event, so we're just here asking for approval of that alternative location.
I don't see a map in here. What, what water?
It's, it's from East Main to Portage on North Water Street.
All right. I just want genuinely to give a map.
They actually gave a map, and I actually commented to Andy, I said, "This is absolutely the worst map I've ever seen. It is a copy of a copy of a copy." So, that's why we didn't share it with you, because I thought you could tell.
I just didn't see it in here.
No offense, but I was like, wow.
I guess it was going to work, but we just didn't see.
But everybody knows it's East Main to Portage on North Water.
All right. Heidi?
So, it's on the street, the festival itself, with those little booths and stuff. By the way, this was a really fun event last year. I worked it. But Heritage Park, or Heritage Park, not Heritage Park, Hometown Plaza.
Yeah.
Will that be available for people to use at least informally and?
I believe it. Go ahead. Yeah. Andrew can talk, but I want to, before I turn to Mike.
Yeah, because I have to say that there was quite a crowd there using Franklin, which was, you know, it was quite the crowd.
Yes. Andrew Madanio, 697 Maryland. One of the benefits of having Colin Boyle as one of our members is that we have use of Hometown Plaza for that, so that's actually going to be our VIP area this year. The bank's been very generous with their space, so yes, we'll be using the street for 30 breweries, four or five food trucks, and then we'll be using the bank area for the VIP and restrooms, that kind of stuff.
VIP, that means anybody can be there, or like tables or?
Anyone that pays $75 for a VIP ticket, yes.
So, not, not me?
Just to clarify, Hometown Bank Plaza is private, so that isn't part of the, the tier agreement with Hometown Bank.
Right. We just had to draw, for our liquor permit to include that area.
Okay. Gwen, you had your hand up.
I did, just a real quick. Part of the proceeds of this is going, this is, is part of it going to charity or?
It all goes either back through donations to charity or to leadership trainings for our members. We paid to have all of our members be CPR certified with proceeds from this. We paid off the outstanding food balance for the free and reduced lunch program before, so it all goes back to the community one way or another, either through charity or through leadership trainings for our citizens, for our members to then become better citizens.
I thought there was a component of it. Are you still looking for volunteers? Because some of us have some experience pouring beer. I'm tied up on that.
John?
How does this affect the drive-through bank in Columbus?
They'll close for the day.
They're going to close?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, we have a very good working relationship with the bank. They're on board with everything. All the businesses, we had the businesses sign the form again, they're all on board with it, they're glad to have it back there. And I will say, we're glad to be back there. It's going to be a lot easier to enforce DORA. Last year, anyone could buy DORA at Ray's or Taco Tano's, and we had to try and keep them out of our event, which wasn't always successful. Being here, it's not a DORA hotspot, so it'll be just better for everyone involved to be on North Water.
Okay. Is there further? Anybody from the audience? Back to counsel for the motion to give the? Prove to approve?
Second.
Emergency.
Any more discussion? Jack, you have any?
Nope.
Who seconded it?
I did. I just want to say it was a great event. I encourage people to come out for it.
All right, anywhere, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve, same thing. Go drink to that, okay?
And if he moves the location again, I'm going to get the map. What's up with that map? Come on.
I would, the drawing I presented to the liquor, which the city also kind of community works with.
All right. That's history, streets and sidewalks, finance venue. Mr. DeLeon.
Miss Baker. NOPEC Energizing Grant.
Good evening. I am just here before you for our annual request to accept the funds from NOPEC, who is our energy provider here in the city of Kent. This is an annual grant that has always been made available to the city of Kent as well as all of NOPEC's participating communities. This year, our grant is worth $47,861. I am asking that council accept this and allow us to put this in escrow with NOPEC so that we can use it at a future time when we have a project that will meet the criteria for the grant. Things that we've done in the past have been the reclamation facility and replacing boilers, motors, and apertenses in that area that needed to have better energy efficiency. And this year, we're currently going to be working on an LED energy-efficient conversion program, doing a study on our streetlights.
Questions? Anybody from the audience?
Wait, I got a question.
Yes.
You just said an energy-efficient upgrade on your streetlights.
A study.
Oh, a study?
Yes.
Because doesn't, don't we like pay Ollie Edison to run those?
So, we have several different programs throughout the city. A majority of our downtown lights are actually owned and operated by the city, and so therefore we're charged for those. So, what we're looking at, we'll take a look at those and several other areas as to how we can, if it makes sense, to change them to LED, what that initial upfront cost would be, what our cost of return is, and then when we would see if there is an energy efficiency to that. So, we'll be doing that study with spring and summer.
Further questions? Anybody from the audience have a question? Back to counsel.
To approve with the emergency.
Second.
Seconded by Gwen. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
He's right there. He's ready to go.
I'm ready to get this show on the road.
Right. Go on, chief.
Good evening. I just want to request permission for us to dispose of 13 Panasonic laptop computers. They were the computers that we used for our mobile data terminals in our cruisers. We purchased them in 2015, and they were put in service in the same year with an expected, life expectancy on them was five years. So, they are two years beyond their life expectancy right now. I talked to our city IT manager, and he told me that they have absolutely no value at all to the city, and just as a matter of practice for security reasons and the security of city information, he does not want them to get into anyone else's hands, so we are just asking that they be destroyed. And he uses a third-party company for that that will provide us with certificates of destruction for the computers.
Questions?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask about. So, an ecological way to dispose of them might have been to hook up with the Kent State collection, but you have an alternative plan to do so in an ecological way?
Yeah, they do it in collaboration with quality IP. I don't know the exact procedure they use to destroy the computers, just that, like I said, we ask that they do be destroyed for the security reasons of the data that is contained within those.
Correct, but the recycling of as many components as possible?
I don't believe our IT staff wants any components to be recycled with city data as a component.
Take them out to the range.
Yeah, target practice now.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience question? Back to counsel.
Authorized emergency.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And now Jim's back up. I like when he gets money.
Yes. We're trying, we're trying, so I'll make this short. We've already obtained 15.8 million in grants for East Main Street so far, and we would have been about done. Unfortunately, inflation and the desire to do things as best as possible requires us to pursue more outside funding. So, the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed not too long ago has a program, it's called RACE. It's a nationally competitive program with a minimum ask of 5 million, so we're going to be asking for 5 and 1/4 million to basically finish up the funding for East Main Street. The project fits really well with their criteria. The one thing I would say is we've added, for this grant, is for successful EV charging stations along the corridor on Kent State property to make it more palatable for them to select us. So, we're here asking your authorization to submit to FHWA for this grant.
Questions? Anyone in the?
Is that, so are those EV stations, is that, is it possibly like a Tesla station in there, or is that, is that a whole different ball of wax?
So, these stations would be in conjunction with Kent State since it would be along their property, so it would probably not because they'll be using their power sources, so they're, they're looking more at like bulk number, like 60 stations versus running new power that would have the ability to run a Tesla station. But this is early on in the process.
Nice try.
Only Tesla on my street.
So, so we are asking for exactly what we need, if, given that inflation's not going to keep going higher. Yeah, I mean, so is there a risk that we, that may not be enough by the time we get to doing the project?
We tried to minimize that risk as much as possible, within reason.
Further questions? Anyone from the audience? John, you had hit permission.